Got a cloudy day out there.
Like maybe five minutes ago? Yeah, I was, I kind of stopped because I was doing something, I'm like.
Of course, I don't, I can't see outside to make sure that's what it was, but.
I wonder what that was, and then I was talking to Tina, she goes, that sounded like an airplane, I said, I think it was thunder, because I looked outside my window and it's like, man, it's really dark out there. Yeah, it must have been then. Yeah.
Eleven oh four.
They were early.
You're your little world, aren't you?
So we ready for Renee? Okay. Okay.
So do you know how to make that bigger on the screen, because it's like it's not even taking up the whole screen, I mean, it's obviously on the white part, but see between here and here, but it's not, it's not taking up the whole screen across there, do you know why? I wonder if it's this thing right here? Oh, there we go, well.
It looks like it works to me, but.
Oh yeah, well, I didn't see that before. That's how he did it, done.
It is now. Ready to go. Okay, I'll call this meeting to order, a special meeting to discuss the options to our balance on the two thousand twenty, twenty one budget. Would you like to begin?
Is there anything you want to do? Okay, all right. Well, thank you Chairman Madsen, members of the board, and Superintendent Howell, you look much better in person than you do on camera, let me just say that. Anyway, well, as we begin this discussion, there are several things that we have learned this last year, and one of the most important things that we've learned this year is that nothing ever is the same for very long. So we're going to just talk a little bit about where we've come from, so that we have a little bit of an understanding of what we've gone through over the last six to eight months, because I think that that's important to understand where we're at right now. One of the things that we know is when we started with our state legislature in January, that we had high hopes that things were, were looking very well at the state by way of revenues. We've been following those revenue projections every single month last year, and we were ahead of budget, I think about a hundred and forty million dollars at the state, at the state level. And the state legislature had met, and I think that they had put in about a, what, three percent or somewhere around there? Four point six percent increase for education, and so, you know, we were all smiles and thinking that we were going to have another great year come this next year. Then, you know, COVID hit, and we started looking at how that was impacting the world, and then it hit the United States, and then it started hitting our economies, and so things started changing, and then before we know it, we're not in school anymore. And, and the kids have had to go home, and we've had to be safe and adapt to online learning and all, all those sorts of things. Well, since that time, because of the early closure and everything happening across the nation, we received notification that, that, you know, things aren't looking too good in the economy across the nation and in Idaho. And for what, what that meant to us in particular was that we received notification that, from Governor Little, that we need to look at a one percent holdback for this year's budget, which was around seven hundred thousand dollars roughly for our district. Not a significant impact, especially where we had a little bit of a savings from the retirement sick leave that, that was put in as a holiday that we didn't have to pay that, so it was kind of a give and take. Well, then, before long, we heard that what the state legislature had passed for education was kind of up in the air again by way of a future holdback for next year. And just what was it, last week or maybe ten days ago, we had a little bit of advanced notice, but they kind of made that official that now we're looking at a five percent holdback for next year's budget. Well, that kind of brings us up to where we're at current. All of our, our dreams and our plans of where we are at kind of changed quite a bit, and we're required by law to present a balanced budget according to the resources that we have available. So with all that kind of being said, we'll kind of step into where we're at with what that means to us as far as this next year's, this next year's budget. So you can see there at the top of the page on the screen that a five percent holdback for the state of Idaho is roughly ninety nine million dollars, okay? That's what is required to be cut out of the public education budget for five percent in order to keep things in balance with where they think that we're at with our state revenues. School District twenty five, if you take the whole pie, if you will, and you say what portion does School District twenty five get from state funding, it's roughly three point eight percent. So if you take that ninety nine million dollars times that three point eight percent, that estimated funding reduction or cut to our district is roughly three million seven hundred and fifty two thousand dollars. So not a small chunk of change, I mean, that's a sizable amount that we have to look at replanning on, on our next year of how we would utilize those funds, or how we would utilize our budget without receiving those funds. The hard part, or maybe the part that's, that we want you to understand and need the public to understand, is that it doesn't mean that we're going to get three point seven million dollars less overall in, in actual cash dollars, and I'll explain what that means. So if you look at the, the part just under that three point seven million dollars, you'll see that the first two categories there are administrative and classified salaries and certificated staff salaries as well. What the state has done is saying, we're not going to pass an, we're going to take this year's salaries, level of salaries, the amount of funding that they have available at the state level in this year's budget, and we're just not going to pass on any increase, no movement, no salary increase for next year. So what that means is that we don't receive any less money for salaries than we have in this year's budget, but we don't receive any more. Okay, so that's why that says no increase, that means no increase to us by way of, there's no increase anticipated for salaries next year. We don't get any less money than when we, than what we have this year, everything's staying status quo, but we don't receive any more money at all. So that, that doesn't impact our cash balance, if you will, the cash in the bank. But the various other components that you see underneath there will, and that's what we need to explain to you. So for example, leadership premiums is one of those areas there that they have under their discretionary dollars, like leadership premiums, professional development, IT and things of that nature. So in this case here, they cut one hundred percent of the leadership premiums or six hundred and eighty one thousand dollars. Now, in this scenario, we will not receive that cash, those funds. So that does impact our budget by way of cash flow. Does that make sense to everyone of what I'm saying there? Okay, so all of these items from here on out will impact our budget in re, in relation to that we will not receive the cash. So leadership premiums, professional development was cut forty five percent, a little bit more than that actually, two hundred and sixty one thousand. IT staffing, now our, our IT staffing is budgeted in Fund two forty five, but we still have a. IT staffing, now our, our IT staffing is budgeted in fund two forty-five, but we still have a very bare, bare-boned IT staff. So, those funds come in from the state and we put it into fund two forty-five, and they have cut a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. So, we will have to either, we would either have to, one, reduce the staffing, which doesn't seem very plausible for us to do that, or. We would have to make up that hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars out of the general fund back into fund two forty-five. And the same holds true for the, um, next item there, classroom technology funds, two forty-five, that's more sizable, three hundred and twenty-six thousand. So between those two technology items there, you're looking at four hundred and what, sixty thousand dollars roughly, of technology funding that they cut. And, some of you who have been on the board before, or have been following education for a number of years, would recognize that when we went through this. Um, in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, that, that's what the state did, they looked at discretionary funds that they could cut, they tried to retain. Staffing and salaries to the extent that they could, but they cut deeply into areas that, what they would determine as being discretionary, such as professional development. Literacy, maybe some of the special programs. So anyway, we're looking at four hundred and sixty, some odd thousand dollar cut to technology as well. Some of these other items are a little bit smaller, um, content and curriculum, we just learned, um, yesterday late afternoon. That where this was twenty-five percent, they have now cut the entire amount out, so that, and this is kind of a little bit of a moving target as we, um, talk to you, that things change. Day to day, it seems like, a little bit here and there, but nothing real substantial, but this is actually gonna be a hundred percent for content and curriculum now. College and career advisors, um, they cut fourteen thousand dollars roughly there. Gifted and talented is another one of those categories that is one hundred percent out now, so we will not receive any gifted and talented funds from the state for next year, so that is a change from this sheet. Um, literacy proficiency, math and science, smaller items, and then this operational funding is what used to be called our discretionary funding. That's our unit factor times X number of dollars per unit, um, that's cut, um, a little bit over half a million dollars now. So all of these estimated losses in cash that we would normally have received for next year, um, are gonna be now over two million dollars. It'll be just slightly over two million dollars with those changes with that. So we will be down cash-wise, two million dollars, but overall, we'll be down about three point seven million dollars as far as loss of funding, if that, if that makes sense to everyone, okay? Alright. Couple of things that, um, we just wanna talk to you about is, as far as. Where our budget is at right now, as far as, um, what we've put together and how we have, um, how we have put the, the, the budget. On the revenue side and the expenditure side together, so on the revenue side, we have adjusted all the revenues to the estimated state, local and federal level. So whatever they said that, that we can anticipate to receive, all of our budget is built at the rev- on the revenue side at that estimated funding, and we've gone through a portion of that just a moment ago. On the expense side, or on the expenditure side of things, um, we have done the same thing, we have adjusted our budget to the estimated funding that we believe that we're going to receive. But what that means is a couple of things here, so first of all, our budget going into this next year, um, has no staff. Or, or, um, instructional program reductions, meaning that we have planned on retaining all the staff, no reductions in force, no furlough days, no, no cuts or elimination of positions at this point in time. We have everything built in with our existing staff that we have right now, um, and we have not reduced any programs. Back in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, we were cutting, um, salaries, we were cutting positions, we had done some reductions in force, and we had cut programs. So we're in a much better position at the present time right now than we were ten or twelve years ago, but, um, just to let you know where we're at right now. Um, we have not planned in the budget for any movement on any of the salary schedules for certificated administrative or classified staff, and that's because the state has not. Um, pushed those through, now I'm gonna let Carl talk for a minute about what the state did put in, um, what they did include in there for salaries on their funding part, you want? You wanna visit about that for a second?
Want me to pipe up right now?
You bet.
Okay. Uh, in fact, it was about a week ago, we got this information from the state about the five percent, and, um. In that, in fact, I'll find it here. Two things related to our salary, our salary apportionment, they're, they're. Letting us know right ahead of time that they're not gonna fund next year, when Bart's already talked about a couple of these. Suspending the two percent base salary increase for administrators, administrators and classified staff. So, the base salary is not gonna increase, so the base salary, we've, we've calculated in our own calculations, is actually the salaries for the current year. So however they are sitting right now is what we're using in next year's calculations. And freezing movement on instructional and people's service staff on the career ladder. And, um. We kinda had an aha moment yesterday, as they were discussing this, the, the career ladder at the state is a, a single line with cells on it. And, uh, they're not going to allow any movement down on those cells. However, they are going to allow movement on is, uh, additional education. So, uh, if somebody happens to get their master's degree during this, this year, we will turn that into the state and they will fund that additional education, so that's the good news. But, the cells will not move, or people will not move within any of the cells, which is, uh. Brings up another point, cause, because they added that additional rung on the career ladder, I don't know if you recall hearing that. There will be no movement into that, that, that new rung. Is it advanced professional? I can remember residency and professional, but the, the other one escaped me. They're not gonna, they're, they're not gonna fund that additional rung, basically, this year.
That's what no movement means from the state when they say that, yeah.
They're not going to acknowledge that this next year. Ironically enough, they, they're requiring information. From us on our, uh, our evaluations. The, the information they would need for employees to move into that into the future. So, uh, I know when they were talking about that yesterday, uh, Brenda and, uh, and Lori. Kinda got this deer in the headlight look, because there's a lot of information in there that we haven't captured as of yet. Gonna be a lot of work to get that information to the state, in fact, they've extended the deadline for us to submit that information. And, uh, get that taken care of, but for now, they're not gonna allow movement into that advanced professional.
Talk about, um, minimum salary?
Oh yes, well, one thing we did find out yesterday as well, uh, if you were to go back and look at any of the, the. The prior legislative session laws, they're already written in many of the, the, the law books that you pick up. They had a, a schedule of salary increases on the career ladder, minimum salaries, and, um. Even back in two thousand and eighteen session, they had for this coming year, a minimum salary of forty thousand dollars. And that is going to go, that's gonna be in place, so we will have a minimum salary this year of forty thousand dollars. Um, without any movement, th- this is just another aside, uh, without any movement, people cannot move from this, um. Residency step three into the professional rung, even though they might have a professional endorsement. So we're, we're, we're having to figure out how we're gonna deal with all that, because. In some of the legislation, if you remember a year ago, we had this issue about the forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. That, uh, we needed to pay somebody who was on that professional rung. And, the state's not gonna fund moving into that, but there's this. This issue kicking around out there about, they have this professional endorsement. Do we need to pay them the forty-two thousand five dol- huh, forty-two thousand five hundred dollars for that professional rung, which, according to some of the. The legalese we've read, may or may not. Need to be paid, so we have that issue still kinda floating around out there that we haven't resolved yet, so. I'll be honest with you, I don't have a clue right now. Uh, we don't have a lot of people in, in our, well, I shouldn't say that, we probably have what? I'm gonna guess maybe forty people?
Yeah, I was gonna say forty to fifty.
Cause I had done the paper, I think we're at like thirty, thirty-six, something like that, I'll get the exact number for you.
So forty was a good guess, so. But anyway, th- that's kinda, that's still kind of in that nebulous. Area that we, or still trying to figure out what we need to do for that, those folks. And so, but if they, we know that they are not gonna be moved off of residency three, to professional one, and so, uh. Uh, again, that's something we're, we're gonna have to have some discussions with. Um, and I think that's about, all I need to say on, that's, this is all stuff we learned yesterday about three-thirty in the afternoon, so. Um, after we had this glazed look after look, listening to part of that session yesterday, it was, it was the post-legislative roadshow yesterday. Done over video, of course, and so that's usually something that is done in the middle of April, so we're about a month behind on getting a lot of these details, so.
Okay, so we have a better understanding about where we're at with salaries, in some cases, there was a little bit of giving, and most of the time, um, no movement, no increases for the bottom, for the bottom line. A couple of other things here in the budget, just to be aware of, um, when you look at that middle one, it says program expenditures adjusted to estimated revenues. So as we have looked at, um, some of our different areas, like, let's just take for example, professional development, which was cut, um. What was that, cut, uh, yeah, the, the two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, so we have adjusted our professional development budget back down to be within. Those resources that we have available, so when it says program expenditures are adjusted to the estimated revenues, we've made those adjustments in. These budget expenditure sheets that you have there, this is more of a summary, but that has been done, just so that you know. Um, the other thing that we've done is the budget does include medical, dental, vision and life, and the budgeted increases for medical and dental, we didn't have, I don't think, an increase for vision and life, so those remain the same, but that's within, uh, the budget. We also have the retirement sick leave, which, um, we don't have to pay, um, this next year because of that holiday that they put in place, and there was. I, I guess we had the question, are they going to reverse that decision, are they gonna put that back in, but we haven't heard anything, so right now. That six hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly that we would have had to have paid for next year for retirement sick leave, is not budgeted as an expenditure line item, and we hope that that isn't gonna come back. I, I think that we would have heard something by now if they were gonna reverse that decision. And then lastly, um, our curriculum adoption is maintained within this budget with where we are at with, with, uh. Chuck Wec- or Chuck Orr's, uh, five-year plan that he has for, um, textbook adoptions, and then our supply budgets are still in there at a hundred percent of where we're at in this year's budget. Okay, so that's kinda where we're at as we have moved forward in a very quick way to determine how we could balance the budget. Any questions from anyone about what we've talked about there, before we move on? Okay, the difficult part here in moving forward is, okay. What does this all mean as far as balancing the budget, and again, we would bring your minds back to where we were at about ten or twelve years ago when we went through this. Generally speaking, when the economy slips a little bit into a recession, and when we have some of these types of things that have happened. Historically, we have seen that it takes, it, it's not a one and done, meaning this isn't just a one-year event, and then we're back smiling and, and dancing and doing all these things, usually. It takes a little bit of time for things to recover, the last time that we went through this, it took approximately three years, and. The board at that point in time adopted a three-year plan that would get us in place to make sure that we could stay fiscally sound, that we could minimize reductions to our programs and to the educational impact that we would have, and to our staff. So as we, um, kinda paint this picture for you, we wanna just kinda bring up a couple of things, just to have you have this in mind. Our, um, when we, and we, a lot of times, will talk about current revenues to current expenditures, meaning. What do we have coming in currently, and what do we have budgeted currently? Aside from our reserves and our fund balance, so, so we kinda set our reserves and our fund balance aside, and we say, okay, how much money's coming in, and how much money is going out year to year? So in this first scenario there, under, um, fiscal year twenty-one, which is next year's budget, we're estimating just a little over seventy-eight million dollars in general fund revenue, seventy-eight point two million dollars there. Um, you can see the little note that says, um, one right there, that's with the five percent holdback that we have just talked about. If you come down to the next line item there where it says estimated current expenditures, we are anticipating eighty million, three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars going out. So what that means is that we're just shy of two point one million dollars. Short, meaning that we have more money going out or anticipated in next year's budget than we have coming in, and we're typically in that scenario, usually a lot closer than this, but that's, that's where we're at. We've also projected the following year, because we do not believe that this is going to be just a one-year, um, event. The, the governor and his, uh, his economists that he has working for him, um, has indicated as recently as this week, that. That they are anticipating that the five percent may grow anywhere between six to fourteen percent, is that what he said, I don't know? Eight to fourteen percent, um, for the future, and, and for this next year, so. We are living in a time where we are just not certain where everything is going to be, and we have always taken somewhat of a conservative approach of saying. You know, we wanna minimize the impact, we don't wanna cut deeper than we have to cut, but we don't wanna spend more than, than we have resources to spend within a given timeframe, and we can't look at this as just a one-year event. I think we have to look at a broader picture and say, how can we protect the integrity of the district for the next two to possibly three years? And so this fiscal year twenty-two shows, uh, another scenario that may or may not hold true. Meaning the estimated current revenues are at the same level as twenty-twenty-one, which is this next year. And that footnote two on there says a zero percent increase and no further holdbacks. So I don't wanna say that that might be a best-case scenario, but a worst-case scenario would be that we have additional holdback, we don't receive any new funding. Two years from now, and we have further holdbacks, that would be a worst-case scenario. So this is same funding as next year with no additional holdbacks, and then if you look at the current estimated expenditures, they've gone up about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's because, if you look at note three. That retirement sick leave premium of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars is gonna have to come back into the budget at a minimum, and that doesn't take into consideration. Any other increases for medical insurance, or any of those types of things as well. So in that case, our estimated overages would be about two point seven million dollars there. Okay, so we're just trying to show how we have to plan for the future in the event that things go from where we're at now, a little bit worse, or maybe a little bit better. Questions from anyone there? Alright. This next section here, um, talks about, um, funds that we received, again, they were called the R F funds, ten or twelve years ago when we received them. This is under the CARES Act, which is, um, part of this new federal stimulus package, and so what we've done there is that we've shown you on this first line item where it says allocate federal funds over two years. The total amount that we, and we know this almost to the exact dollar right now, that the state has said that we're gonna receive is two point one three three million dollars in federal stimulus dollars. There are not many strings that are attached to those dollars, we can spend that for virtually whatever we wanna spend it for. And there is not a supplanting issue, where typically with federal funds, you can't supplant the dollars, meaning that you can't spend less here out of the general fund and replace it with these federal dollars. There are not the same strings attached to this, so, um, we have allocated those federal dollars over two years, you can see one point oh six six million allocated in fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two. And then we have, um, shown you some things that are really, um, some things that we know that we're gonna have to address. But it doesn't necessarily mean that they will be all those same things, they may be a variety of different things depending upon how the si- situation unravels and how things go from here, so. As an example, one of the things that we know right now is because of the early closure of school, and because of the essential service of having to feed. The community, if you will, um, children under the age of eighteen, which is part of a federal program that we were required to do, we had to start that early. That we have suffered a loss in food service because of that, we're paying all of the staff, just like we do drivers, parapros, teachers, administration, whatever. All of them are being paid, and they're working in these programs, but we have suffer- suffered a loss of revenue, so. Um, we have budgeted three hundred thousand dollars for this next year that would need to be replenished to food service program, and two hundred thousand for the next year in twenty-twenty-two. Then, there are some impacts with the COVID that is happening, we've, we'll see that with staffing, we'll see that in health-related things that we've had to do. With redoing graduation that we've had to do this year, with cleaning our schools and, and disinfecting and doing that over the summer, and maintaining our schools in a safe environment. So we budgeted a hundred and thirty thousand dollars there. It may be more, it may be a little bit less, and so this will ebb and flow depending upon. It may be more, it may be a little bit less, and so this will ebb and flow depending upon how things all shake out. We also have the state technology equipment that we just talked to you about above on that first slide there, three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars that will need to be replaced in next year's budget, and also the hundred and thirty-eight thousand that will need to transpire over the next two budgets there. Um, medical, dental and vision and life, we don't have, we have that built into the budget this year, but next year, it's gonna be another six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, five hundred thousand. We don't know exactly, but we put six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there for fiscal year twenty-two. And then special education services have typically been going up every year, probably between a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, um, our needs that we have. So if you look at the bottom of this here, you'll see in year one of the federal stimulus, we're looking at using just short of a million dollars, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand. And in year two, one point one three eight million dollars. And here's a total, two million one thirty-four, which is just slightly above what we're gonna receive in funding there. Okay, we can't, we can spend more than, than, but we can't request more than what the federal government will allocate in that respect. So that's how we're anticipating at this point in time using those stimulus dollars. All right? And those funds have to be kept in a separate fund and reported and, and requested by way of reimbursement. Okay, lastly, um, the question that will come up is in relation to, okay, we've explained the budget, we've balanced the budget. We know we have more going out than what's coming in. How is that gonna impact our reserves or our fund balance? And so what we have shown here is, um, we have a board policy of five percent, which is a four percent unappropriated and the one percent contingency. And this percentage is calculated off the total amount of estimated revenues that we bring into, uh, the district. So for this year that we're talking about, this year we're in right now, where we're at is about four million dollars roughly, um, in our, our, um, five percent board policy. And fortunately, because the state has been a little bit more generous over the last two to three years, we actually have about eight million dollars we're estimating in appropriated fund balance. So a total resource of about twelve million dollars that we can use to offset some of our decreases. And let me just take a minute and say, there are many school districts within the state of Idaho that are not in this favorable of a position that, that our district is in. So fortunately, we have a little bit of a cushion as we look over the next two or three years possibly with our budget. If we did not have that, we would be talking a whole different picture right now.
I think kudos goes to you two and others, uh, for giving us that eight million dollars. We could have blew it, but you were conservative and we didn't, and it's there.
Well, they talk about rainy day funds. You've heard this at the state level, you know, they're, they're already using the rainy day funds as part of the P S F, um, what they're doing up there. And, and we have the same thing, and so thank you. We, we are grateful that we're in this position that we're in right now. Hopefully, it will stretch us and get us through the coming years. So moving on to fiscal year twenty-one, um, you can see that the, the five percent stays relatively about the same, a few dollars different here or there. And then this amount, which is the appropriated fund balance, has gone down by by, by this amount right he- here, okay? This excess two point one million dollars, that, that comes off of the appropriated, oops, I got down too far, uh, the appropriated fund balance. So now that has dropped down to five point nine million dollars after the end of this next year. If this goes another year based upon our scenario there of using, um, of having a zero, um, percent increase and no further holdbacks, it would drop down in fiscal year twenty-two to three million dollars. Now, that's always the, the big question right now. If there are more holdbacks and deeper cuts at the state level by way of funding, this is gonna shrink, and then we're gonna be into our board policy. So that's our best estimate, our best projection right now, um, of where we're at with the budget at this point in time. The reality is that we probably will not know any more than what we know right now until we get through the end of this fiscal year, meaning the next two months with our, our state budget. Um, because you know that in April, they lost four hundred and seventy million dollars in April's, um, estimate, which was sixty percent of their budget. They're anticipating to make a little bit of that up, possibly in May and June, which they may, which we hope that they will. But, um, going forward, we don't know where the economy will be as far as revenue projections. And that's, that's just gonna take time for us to see where we're at, uh, Mr. Man.
Well, that, that, part of that deficit in April is the governor allowed taxes to be pushed out until June.
Yes.
And so we're gonna pick some of that up in June, we have to.
Absolutely.
And we might have a banner June.
We hope.
As pent up as we are right now?
Right.
Go ahead.
The, the, um, Carl and I were talking about this this morning, and he brought up a good point, uh, 'cause I looked at April's sales tax, and I'm like, I was really surprised that April's sales tax was not down. And, uh, Carl brought up a good point. He said, well, what's reported in April is, 'cause they don't have to pay that sales tax until the twentieth of the following month. So what we really saw in sales tax collection was really for March, which was kind of the beginning of all this. So we'll probably see a reduction in that sales tax come that May allocation. But hopefully, these other state income taxes will pick up a little bit more too. I couldn't quite hear what you're saying. Is it or is it not affected by this, is that what you ask? Yes, none of that is, so we passed the school plant facility levy, uh, patrons of this community passed that, um, in, was that March? And so that is in place now for another ten years, and just as they approved it, that will roll forward, and this will not be an impact. One of the things that, um, was talked about when we went through this back in two thousand seven, two thousand eight was, um, the ability or the opportunity for districts to elect to use possibly some of the school plant facility fund dollars to supplement their general fund. Now, that has not been brought up, um, this year. And so at this point in time, yes, the school plant facility budget will remain intact and will be unaffected by this. Lot of them are already underway, as you can see, yes. Okay, that really concludes what we have unless you have additional questions or?
You're looking for some, some direction from us? Well, let me, let's just share a couple of the o- items here, and I think this is in the, if we keep going down here.
Yeah, I had to add them.
In, in your packet is, this is our formula that we used to put together our projections for salary apportionment and base, uh, our entitlement and all these special fundings, special distribution. So you can go through there and, and look at your leisure what, what we have, but there, you see there on the, on the right-hand side, there are a lot of negative numbers. And, uh, these are what Bart talked about before. If you look at all these negative numbers and the actual revenue we anticipate coming in for that, we have adjusted the budget, which currently exists, and we'll, you'll see that in a minute, to match all of these, whether there be zero or a reduced amount. So our budget does include that. And the base salaries up there are, the, the, the salaries as they currently exist in our, um, through the IC information system. So, uh, if you were to go to and pull out the reports for instructional pupil service personnel, that's the base salary in the reports. Administrative and classified base salaries, of, of course, are written in, in, in Idaho code. And they pulled those back, so those are the actual sa- base salaries for this year. And so you, you can go through there at your leisure. There's one thing in there has some, uh, question marks by it, and that's ICAT remediation. As you know, they did not do ICAT testing in the spring. So they're trying to figure out how they're going to distribute these funds. I have no idea if a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars is what we're going to get, based upon some sort of formula they de- developed based upon prior years, I have no idea. So that was still a question mark, 'cause in, in the special distributions worksheets that they gave us, they had no answer for us. And they had no answer for us yesterday. So, uh, that's still a question mark. And if you continue on, uh, this is our estimated revenues, which Bart already talked about. And of course, um, this is all funds, uh, there, it says revenue expense summary. The proposed budgets there, there are there in the middle on the revenue side, so everything right now is in balance, all of our special funds and general fund. Uh, many of our, many of our special funds were cr- were entered and created based upon information we had prior to this last week. Many of them have decided that they're gonna keep the, the budgets as they have been presented and do adjustments later based upon, uh, actual salaries and that sort of thing. And initially in our, in our budgets, we had movement built in. And when the state said we were not gonna allow movement on the salary schedule or the career ladder, we went back and took that back out. So many of them had built-in movement and balanced their budgets, they will do adjustments later. And of course.
Let me add one thing here just before you move on. So one of the things that you will see, um, here is that we do not have, do we have the, um, stimulus money built into there yet?
Nope.
So we don't have that built into there, um, right now, but we, that is something that we still need to do and will do, just so that you know. That'll be like probably a fund two fifty-two or something of that nature, so. So I can. Yeah. Right. So. So by way of salaries, we really haven't saved anything by way of salaries because the board made the decision we would continue through this time to, to pay all employees. So that has, that has stayed relatively the same, with one exception, and that is, um, substitute teachers, that, you know, we don't have children in classrooms, and so we have had some savings, a little bit in the substitute teacher category. Um, by way of supplies, we, um, talking with Dr. Howell and, and visiting with you as a school board, we have said that you can continue to spend some of your supply money, but only on those things that are really essential. Uh, we didn't allow people to really stock up or spend the rest of their supply dollars for the rest of the year. So there has been some minimal savings there. Uh, utilities is another, um, area where we have had some savings. We've had probably the best year we've had because we closed down, but we still had staff in schools, so we've had to have some heating on in our buildings, but we're doing, we're doing better in that respect. And then a lot of the professional development that may have, um, been planned early in June or, or last part of May or sometime like that, some of that has either been delayed or, or canceled. So there, there have been some savings, but that all should be reflected in that twelve million dollar beginning balance that is up there. So we've tried to project those savings into that fund balance figure.
Lastly, this is for your, uh, late night studying, it'll put you to sleep faster than anything will. Uh, this is how, if you take all of our general fund budget, group it together in, in like items, like all of our, our bus drivers are grouped as a single item here, all of our substitute teachers, you'll see through here even benefits, how it all breaks out, how it is accumulated in this year's budget. And, uh, we can go into a lot greater detail if you wish, wish, but generally, this is, uh, enough information to give you an idea of how we are spending our money in general fund this next year, or are planning on spending our money. And, uh, and you reach down here at the very end, of course, and just, as Bart talks about, uh, our appropriated fund balance, which is, uh, object eight fifty-five, we are gonna be utilizing some of that for this next year to make sure we balance. And right now, we have a balanced budget. It's subject to change over the next couple of weeks, we need to let you know. We have a budget hearing on, is it June sixteenth, Renee, or eighteenth? Sixteenth, somewhere in there. Our, our regular board meeting date in June. We have to have a, a publication made in the paper. We're planning on that happening on Friday, the June fourth or fifth, whatever that Friday happens to be. So we have to have it to the paper a week prior. So we really have now, two weeks from today, to put this budget to bed. Right now, we have a balanced budget, and so anything that we might discuss over the next couple of weeks, we can make those adjustments and, and, and put them back in the budget as we need, need to. So, uh, the only really other, real op- other opportunity we might have with you to discuss this budget is next Tuesday. So if you have questions or comments, you know, please get with, with us and so we can have those discussions prior to Tuesday. And I think every board meeting, we've had an opportunity for public to even put comments in for budget. And so, um, we're on a very short timeline this year, and it's, you know, we did our best, we were all prepared, so, uh, everything kind of came together this week very nicely, and, um. There's always next week. What's that? There's always next week. There's always next week, then everything's fall apart, that's true. You think the state will do anything more in the next two weeks? I mean, you have to have. We're not anticipating any major changes. We might get clarification on two or three things, but they're not going, going to affect our budget.
Yeah.
Uh, I can tell you right now, we did not, we did not make any adjustments for the forty thousand dollar minimum salary in this. But in the whole scheme of things, the revenue would have increased anyway on our salary, on our salary apportionment to cover that. So that'll be one of those things we adjust in the fall, and s- and when we come around to seeing what our actual staff, actual staffing is, so.
And, and we did refund all our sports things and, and all of that, just all like, everything like that that had to be. Now, what about, um, where we're not using Holt Arena? Are we using some of that money for some of these other?
Exactly, yeah.
Options?
We are.
Okay.
So for the graduation, uh, celebration, we opted to put that money toward our graduates with, um, some of the other, um,
I know.
Yeah, yep.
We've repurposed some of those funds.
Okay.
So with that, we will, if you have any other questions, of course, get back to us. And, um, uh, if you wanna ask something today, of course, just, let's, let's get it out there and see if we can get it answered. Uh, and as I mentioned, next Tuesday is probably one of the last opportunities unless we have something really drastic change that we want, we'd like to get you back in together, but tom- next Tuesday probably be the last chance we have to really discuss budget items. Unless, like I said, unless something really changes in the meantime from either the state or they decide to go eight percent instead of five, then we'll have to get back together, so.
I had, uh, direct communication, we have, uh, the governor's education advisor, Greg Wilson, this week, and asked him specifically, should we plan on more? And he said, no, um, no guarantees, but he said, education is the governor's top priority. And I confirmed that even through a call to Superintendent Demara, and she said she received a personal call from the governor who said, you know, I apologize, I couldn't do more, but the five percent is pretty much what we're at. So we feel comfortable presenting this budget, knowing that, uh, next week, we will come to you, uh, to, uh, propose or recommend issuing contracts at existing levels to our teachers, knowing that we have this in place, and then as Carl pointed out, the timeline for the remaining budget. But certainly, we'll have negotiations to follow through with, uh, Mrs. Lurie and her team, and, uh, hopefully come out as well through all of that between the both parties.
I should mention, uh, after we had our conversation with the, no, we didn't have a conversation, our listening with the state yesterday, uh, I did go in and adjust next year's salary scheduled to reflect a forty thousand dollar minimum. So all of next year's salaries. So, all of next year's salaries at a minimum will be forty thousand dollars as those contracts are issued. So, as you mentioned that, I did do that this morning, so we don't have, for, for next year.
Well, I do have to say I'm really grateful. I remember the last time we had cuts this week, how really awful and devastating it was and implementing pay-to-play and everything else we had to do. It was, it was pretty hard on everybody. So, it's, it's nice to see that, that you have prepared so well for this. I mean, not that you can prepare for this, but that...
We're in a position...
We're in a position.
Weather the storm a little bit better.
Yeah. I'm grateful for that, thank you.
JD, I double-checked on that for you, and it's thirty-one. Thirty-one people that would go from, the, maybe go from the R three to the one, even though it wouldn't move down, their pay would be that forty-two five.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? I should add that first. Well, we have them.
Any other direction or comment for us?
No, just, just... Yes, I was going to ask, I was going to ask. Fund, yeah, smart move, so, know the direction, but go ahead, right, guys?
Yeah, I'd say.
So, continue on, is that what you're telling us?
March on, march forward.
Okay, we can do that.
Yeah.
All right, so, we can turn the ma- forward to Marianne?
Yeah.
So, I don't have any prepared comments. I don't have, um, I just have a few thoughts that, um, I would like to express our appreciation also to Carl Smart and Bart Reed, um, although through the years, we may have been cursing you. Uh, we appreciate that, um, now.
You have, by the way.
I didn't personally.
You understand.
Um, I do know from talking with other local presidents across the state that Pocatello is in a much better situation than many others, and so, we do appreciate that and acknowledge that. Um, I just want to reinforce that, um, we also really appreciate the collaborative nature that we have had through this process. Um, and I think that, um, as long as we continue that collaborati- collaboration and that, this open rela- openness that we've had, um, I really look forward to, um, the next year. I know we're in a financial strain, but, um, I think with this budget and with the collaboration between, um, both the I, the PEA and the state, uh, the school district, and also, um, the IEA also is working on a state level, and they also continually talk with Greg Wilson and, and the governor. So, um, I think, um, since we are in such uncharted territories or maybe similar to two thousand eight, but not quite there, um, I think now might be a really good time, instead of the traditional negotiations, um, if we sit down this year and really work, um, in, in an interest-based, collaborative mode. Um, uh, my treasurer, Tim Giesbrecht, is our financial guru. Um, I tried really hard to follow it today, but math was never my strong point, as Sue Pettit could attest to, when she was my principal. But, um, we would love to just come in and sit down and really look at what we can do, um, with the salaries to, um, reflect that increase for the base pay and, and so forth. So, um, I, I'd like you guys to think about that a little bit. Um, I think that would, this would be a, a perfect year to continue that collaborati- collaboration that we've had. And I don't know why my voice always does this when I come to speak to you guys. I'll leave and it'll be back to normal, so. Um, anyways, um, I, I also want to say that, um, on behalf of, of the teachers and the staff, that A, we, we really do appreciate the fact that you continue to pay salaries. Um, every single person in this district, I, I, I can't imagine, um, and I don't wish this to ever happen, but I can't imagine a better group of people, both in the Ed Center, on the school board, and in our schools, and in our employee, that, to be in that position when this, um, crisis has happened. Um, I know that we have people who are working far and above any expectations that we may have ever had, um, for our students, for our staff. I, every time I, I go to lunch in the park with my great niece, I have to just give shout-outs to the cafeteria staff. I mean, they're out there in summer, i- i- in sun, rain, even snow. Um, and so, it has been, um, it has shown us what we can do when we are collaborative and when we pull together, a- and when we have that common goal of doing what's best for our kids. So, um, we appreciate that, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. What's that? Oh, that's it. I saw it on T- I heard it on TV.
Well, and you know, Lisa brought us that program they're doing, that they got a grant for, and which sounds like this ends up the same kind of alley.
Do I need a motion? No action, okay, we're adjourned. Tuesday.